Okay, I'd like to start this meeting to order. Today's Thursday, August 15, 2013, 5:35. Our invocation is going to be by check.
Please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask your blessing over this meeting. To be with us each day, dear Lord, to continue to guide us and give us strength as we go through the day. We ask you, O Lord, to give each of us wisdom to make the decisions that we need to make. We ask that you continue to grace us with the Holy Spirit and continue to stand beside us as we go through each and every day. Dear Lord, we ask this in your name. Amen.
Okay, we have established a forum. Councilman... Councilman Gero, Councilman Looney, Councilman Rodriquez, and Councilwoman Christie. Now, if everyone will please stand for the US vote to the Texas side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Is this time for the citizens' comments?
Just comment? Yeah. You're about to pour me. I jumped in front of law.
That'd be good.
The main point I'd like to make is that I think the top priority, and thank you for the wonderful pitch, there's a major top priority on the waste of water that the city senator... And we'll take this soon for a little ride or something like that. Here shows that ride is here. Here shows a hydro that didn't have a hose on it, see? And here's where it's done a lot. See, they got two kind of... That's on that far left-hand corner when you turn left. They got... They got two kind of sprinkler systems on them. One is a tripod like the... Like the school district uses to do. And this is taken on the way out. And same one here. And I guess my wish list, if we could get that 150 yards so paved by veterans today, no real eleven, that'd be nice. And this is a good part of it. That shows one of those where they have a section marked up. And I'm back here somewhere. I've got to be sure to get water. It's like a tree, you know, so we get... I can't see that one. I can't see that one. Ain't that... Oh yeah, this is a bad... You can't see it, but it's constantly... People are leaving the water on all night and all that. And when I was through there this morning, the city sprinklers going round and round with water to some boards. So these are items that just can be corrected. And this is the backside here, open field and all that. And... But my main goal, we've got plenty of time, is for Memorial Day, because I'd like to have it really tip-top shaped and have a real serious dedication of veterans. You know, the hospital will do it and really celebrate Memorial Day. So that gives nine months or something. So anyway, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Just make like a comment on the budget. Just to kind of... On cemetery, currently, currently, they did mention the fence, which has paid off cemetery funds. And then we also are putting in a timer that goes with the water meter. Is it in at this point?
Yes, the timer actually, and what it does is it shuts off the water. What it's going to do is you put it forward, you know, to the section where it'll turn off the water, so it doesn't stay on all night long.
In case somebody leaves one of the sprinklers on.
So by 7:30 to 1:30, water's on.
There's other people that are leaving it on all night long.
To 7:30 at night, it's on, but from 7:30 at night till 7:30 in the morning, it's off. So we've got a timer now, so the issue with people leaving the water on all night long and you have lakes and water, you know, all over the place from leaving it on, that should resolve that.
If all were on the left side as you go in, there's no problem on the right side.
Some of those markers have leaned because it's too much water soaked there, just, I mean, when it's on all night long.
Was the city watering during the day? Because yesterday, one wasn't when I went to the... It was yesterday I went to the funeral, they were going on right there by the lake side, so I don't know why they had it on. I turned one off.
See, you guys, I mean, that's up to... That's going to be up to Alex, and we need to work a little bit better on scheduling for him to know when there's going to be burials and when there's not.
If they see a kid out there with dirt, he won't turn it on.
Yeah, and I'll make sure and let him know that, because I, you know, I just know that he's been going out and trying to water more now that we've got the issue with the timer and everything and go in the morning and turn them on and things like that to get, you know... But they do it by section. They don't turn on everything.
Well, yeah, it might have been a private person who could have hit the wrong little thing and had it on, and that's the big one going. I'm sure the big one was going on because people were going to park there. Yeah, I don't get it.
So then, and the other one, I just want again, sticking with budget topic, sorry not to be... The... In the current proposed budget that was presented on August 1st, we talked about that there's available about $51,000 to do reconstruction of roads and sprinklers, which would help eliminate citizens watering, et cetera. Again, our guys will be able to do the roads. So once we kind of get a little more information on cost, you know, with this budget, y'all can pass to do those two projects as long as funding's available. So that's in there, so it kind of addresses some issues.
Well, see, a lot of it's a one-time deal. Roads, those three down, and the budget to go down, there are...
Yeah, so just kind of wanted to let everybody make sure that, you know, again, that was in there and that we already, we are making some improvements already to help with some of the issue brought up.
Any other citizens coming? I think we're going to have to start our workshop. I need to see manager walk away. Okay. I think she's having problems with our PowerPoint presentation.
We're going to pass out. At least we have a handout as well, so...
Yeah, I'll give another one just a second.
I'll try to go slow then. I got to talk a bit. This is budget workshop number six. So we're getting there. We still have several minutes to go. We have tonight, some of the topics for discussion are going to be vehicle equipment listing that I'm going to hand out. We won't do a lot of talking on it, but a handout that'll go in your budget book with some more information. Police Department's going to be giving a presentation in just a moment. The items we discussed at last meeting were unfunded, and then the tax rate, some more discussion on tax rate. So I'm going to have this out as well. This is what we did. Andrew Verentes helped me along with Eli, this is in the service department, and all several other supervisors. We went through and got a listing of vehicles and major equipment. This is in every piece of equipment. There may be some smaller generators and things of that nature. Not everything is listed on this. This, what we did was try to figure out how many vehicles we have in each department. We put on there the vehicle number, the model, the year, mileage if it's available, and its condition. So this is just for future, you know, to help us all understand where we are once we start getting a maintenance program put together and implement that the next year or so, which has been talked about in lots of different meetings. This also, the way, the very top page of it, is how I determined how to split Eli's mechanic's salary between the water fund, water and sewer fund, and the general fund. As we get the fleet maintenance software next year, we'll have a better estimate of all this time. It can probably actually even cost out if he's doing major repairs and oil changes, cost value will be further. So what we did basically was based on number of vehicles and equipment, which puts the general fund, it has about 73% of vehicles and equipment, and the utility fund has 27%. So that's why I split his salary out, that we did a transfer out from the water sewer to help pay for his salary. So that's just a little bit of info. Do you have questions? Now, and with other budget meetings, they'll bring...
Who's the service?
The service department, the actual maintenance department. He has a vehicle log. He has a small vehicle. And again, he does most of our repairs. The larger pieces of equipment, Tahoe's, such as that, those are sent out. But for the most part, any major, major, major work might be sent out, such as like a transmission rebuild sometimes, but for the most part, he does all of them. And we talked about that at one of the other budget workshops when we pulled him out of the streets department, so we could actually track better future. So if Mr. is ready? Okay, then I guess police department, we're going to let them go back. And there, we mentioned, we brought, explained to them some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting, which was discussion of vehicles. Talked, I think, a little bit about collective bargaining and also comping, which was kind of mentioning that I don't know if we can get all three squeezed in today. With the comping, again, we did just mention that that's actually not be something we'd have to run this year, and it means some important technology to be involved in.
Okay, well, based on some of the questions y'all had from the last meeting concerning the police vehicles, I started doing a little research and put together this PowerPoint presentation to give y'all a comparison of the different vehicles that are out there, what we were looking at. I know originally Chief Herrera had put in the budget for six Tahoe's. I talked to him, the reason, one of the reasons he went with Tahoe's, because at that time, a lot of police agencies around Texas, including the sheriff's department, was going for Tahoe's. So that's the bid he originally got. Through my presentation, I went ahead and I looked at other vehicles and I did a cost comparison that I'll show y'all, and actually, I think we came up with a better vehicle. I'll share it for you on the next slide. The first thing I did was looking at our police fleet right now. We currently have 14 total vehicles. That's all vehicles included. Six of those vehicles are over 80,000 miles. Four of those six vehicles are over 90,000 miles, and we have one that's 164,000 miles, but still in use. I took an average, we keep track of how many gallons each vehicle uses. I didn't want to break it down into every single vehicle, but what I did was I took an overall average of every vehicle that we have. But notice, on some of the older vehicles, we're getting eight miles to the gallon. Of course, some of the newer vehicles, like the newest Tahoe that we bought last year, we're getting 14, 15 miles to the gallon. Okay? So this is an average of the entire fleet. As the entire fleet goes, all 14 cars, we're getting an overall average of 13 miles to a gallon. Here, next slide. The first car I looked at, or the first vehicle I looked at, was the Ford Police Interceptor, and it's the utility version. It's the downscaled model of the Explorer. They don't call it Explorer because it's smaller, it's the Ford Interceptor. Ready to go to the next slide? These vehicles currently come in all-wheel drive, and I put the mileage, they're getting 16 in the city, 21 highway, and 18 miles per gallon combined. Here, next. The cost for this, I received a bid for six vehicles. Plane with nothing in it was $150,372. With that, I got a bid for what it would cost to equip the vehicle, which for the six vehicles, it was $54,813. Now, this does not include the radio or the radar, because typically, we either take that out of an old vehicle and use, and try to reuse it, and... Or we don't buy it from the same company because we can buy it through the radio company that we use a little bit cheaper. But that's what it's going to cost to install. So the total cost for that interceptor, for six of them, is $205,185. I looked at the police interceptor sedan, which is a car. This is what's based on the Ford Taurus. It's a mid-sized, small car. Here, go to the next slide. This one gets, of course, better mileage because the smaller gets the 18 in the city, 26 on highway, and 21 overall. That's on the two-wheel drive. They also make a four-wheel drive version of it. In all my research, nobody except your larger departments like New York PD, Philadelphia, Boston, are going to these type of cars for patrol units. San Antonio's getting some, but they're being issued to specialized units like detectives, other units that don't do transport. And the reason why is because the passenger room in this car is very small. And I talked to San Antonio Police Department, they did a study. They're going for patrol vehicles, they're going to use the interceptor utility for patrol. They're buying the sedans for detectives and other non-patrol-related issues. And the guy, it just happens, a buddy of mine was on a committee that looked at the vehicles for San Antonio, and he said the biggest issue for the sedan was, once you put the cage in there, there's no prisoner room. You're going to have to remove the backseat, put one of those plastic seats in there, you know, that are about that wide, and that's going to add a cost of another couple of thousand dollars for that backseat. So, next slide, please. For this one, that's six vehicles, it came out to $139,536. To equip this one was $53,361 for a total cost of $192. Really, there's not a whole lot of difference between the two. The first cost comparison. The course for Tahoe. This version of Chevy, it's not a regular Tahoe. I know some concerns came up with asking about the mileage of it. You've got to understand that all these vehicles were designed for police use, and so... Ready to go to the next slide? This Tahoe actually gets 15 to the city, 21 on the highway, and 18 combined. The Fords, I know, have what's called an echo booth system in it that supposedly saves on mileage. I believe the Tahoe has something similar to it. One of the issues that San Antonio had, they didn't like the Tahoe, and what it was explained to me was if you're at a dead stop and you have to take off and make a turn at the same time, for example, if the officer's running a stationary radar on the highway, as the car goes by him, that officer has to punch the gas and turn, there's no power steering. It's, he said, it's like, his example is, it's like towing in a ton of rocks. On the Ford utility vehicle, I had to look it up and get it explained, but there's no power steering fluid. They have electronic power steering. And so what he was telling me was with that, you could sit there and you could turn it in that way with the finger without even moving. Power steering worked when it was moving and hiding. And so that's one of the advantages on the utility vehicle.
I like the active fuel management on the Chevy Tahoe is similar to that equal pressure.
So the Tahoe for six vehicles, which was, this was the quote that we put in, just for the, for no equipment, $157, $266, $103,000 for the equipment, and then a total of $261 total. So it is a little bit cheaper for, I put it together so you could look at it, so for the interceptor, $205, $261 for the Tahoe, and then $192. So the difference between the sedan and the utility is really not that much. The difference in sizes between the Tahoe and the interceptor, they said is only four cubic feet. However, what Ford did was, they took that cubic feet from the cargo room. So my question to him was, if you put a cage in that car and you have an officer that's six foot four, do y'all have any problems with room? And he said, no. He said that was one of the tests they did. They took the tallest officers and put them in and let them test right with the cage and made sure they had room.
That's in the interceptor.
That's in the interceptor utility. All the research that I'm looking at, that I got on the internet and I went through everything, and really what I found is most of the county, like sheriff's departments, were going to Tahoe's, and most of the cities were going to the Ford utility vehicle. And why, I don't know, the Tahoe's maybe a little bit taller for gravel roads or the county roads, stuff like that, but that seemed to be the big difference. Every time I looked up, when I typed in Chevy Tahoe, sheriff's department stuff would pop up. When I typed in the Ford, police department stuff popped up. I know there was a question asked on the take-home car policy that we have, so I wanted to address that, if anybody had any questions as far as that. I did a little digging and I found out that the International Association of Chief of Police has actually did a survey on take-home cars that listed the benefits. You really can't see a lot. I'm sure there's no way to clear it up.
There's not. If the PowerPoint on the iPad does that, because it doesn't come across in my computer with the sync up today.
Well, I can tell you a lot of... I can tell you a lot, a lot of the bullet points for the take-home car. You know, one of it is, really is like a recruitment tool. You tell somebody they live in the city, they need to take their car home. Where that comes into play is the officer who's out working, he takes that car home, he's being more visible. The car's parked in his driveway in his neighborhood, he's being a prime deterrent. That officer that walks out, he's on duty, ready to go, as soon as he gets in that car. It also leaves officers, a lot of times we have the officer that gets off at five o'clock, he's on his way home, the officer that will leave him may get a call that requires a backup, but that officer's there. He's already out, so he goes and backs up. We have a policy, if you're in that car, your radio has to be on. If you're in that car, you have to respond. Now, we don't utilize the take-home car policy like a lot of other agencies. The sheriff's department allows them to use the vehicle when they're off-duty, they can take their family to dinner in the vehicle, you know, as long as they're out visible. We don't do that. Ours is just when you're on-duty, you use it, go home, you're off. But it's always been a selling point for guys, I know like a lot of our officers live in San Antonio, well, they're moving to the community to live in Florida, because it's saving them on gas to live here in town and take the car home. And so my point is, you take the car away from them, then they got no reason to live in Florida. I just live in San Antonio. Now, they're back in Florida.
Are any officers that all live within the city, don't they?
Yes, and if you keep going, you can read the bullet points. There's a lot of them. Like I said, it's a benefit. There's a lot of times, like, I got a take-home car, because I live here in the city. But there are times that I get called out in the middle of the night to go do something and help the officer out for whatever reason. Same thing with the chief, he takes his home. But we get called out sometime on Saturday night. It's either for me to go jump in that car and go to the scene than it is for me to get out, get my personal vehicle, drive to the police department, get in the city car, go to the scene, take care of what I'm doing, back to the police department, switch vehicles, come back. And that's what happens a lot of times, and like I said, the coverage, too, when you've got those vehicles out there, even though the guy's often headed home, it makes it look like there's more cops out there than what we're doing. I'm sure you can keep going. Those are just some of the community benefits. Like I said, again, it increases the presence of police, it makes it look, the neighborhood gets a benefit from it, because we have parked in the driveway. Like I said, we got 14 units in the fleet, only eight of them are take-home cars, and that proves mileage, yours. The other six parked at the police department. We looked at, one of the studies, when you go back and look at it, when you do away with the take-home car policy and you start doubling up officers in one car, the miles add up quick. Whereas we take a vehicle, I mean, like I said, Andy, it's been two years since we've bought the newest vehicle, you know, those vehicles are still at pretty low mileage where we can keep those. You put two guys in it, and you're running that car 24 hours a day, your maintenance is going up, your mileage is going up, and it's really not cost-effective. If you look at fuel savings, you're not really saving fuel. One of the main issues that I got from it, and I got two officers here, or three here, when you're assigned a car, that's your main, and you take care of that car. They wash it, they wax it, they're making sure that car runs. Anything goes wrong with it, they're reporting it right away. You take guys that don't have take-home car policies, they show up to work and they get issued a car, they couldn't care much about those cars.
How many cars are take-homes that don't live in the city?
You have to live in the city. You have to live in the city. But like I said, that's always been an advantage, because a lot of guys, we have, for whatever reason, guys from Florida are going to want the cops to do it. You know, we're getting a lot of these guys out of San Antonio. But you talk about it's a benefit to attract that guy that comes to live in this community by giving him the take-home car. And it's always been, you know, ever since I've been here, that's always been a big advantage. And too, a lot of times, too, there's been situations where we've had officers at home who have their radio on, and hear something major going on, they come on duty and come out and respond. And they're less likely to do that if they have to drive to the police department, find one of the cars that's not being used, get in the car, go to the scene, they have to come back, switch cars. And then another thing, too, is when we have some of these older cars that go down, we've got to utilize what we have. And if it gets to a point where you've got one guy sharing a car and putting on an extra mileage, well, when that car goes down, you've got two guys without a car. But if you have any other questions, I'm trying to answer them best, come on.
So if we see a city car out of the city that would save around 775, what are we to think? Because I've seen them, you know, on my way to work in San Antonio, I've seen police cars out there. Being a city cop, what am I supposed to think? Did you go to San Antonio and drop somebody off, or...
It's likely. Every one of our units has a number on, and if you can get the number, they call you.
Well, sometimes we have to go to court in San Antonio, AALR area, or if we have to go to transport somebody for MHR.
You know, because I've seen it, and then I've seen it on blogs, you know, what's the city cop doing?
They used to allow a warrant officer, because the warrant officer served warrants in San Antonio a lot, or in surrounding communities. I don't know if that's still happening anymore, but as far as officers, if they have court, we have courts in San Antonio, we're allowed to take our unit to San Antonio for the court hearing as opposed to our personal vehicle. Or same, if we have to transport somebody to form MHR for community rehab.
And really, that's one of the emergency intentions, and we've been having a lot of those.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I think if I could just put like two cents in about the, you know, going against what the county says, you know, about taking your personal or your family out to even the company vehicle, you know, I think that's, you know, I don't think that that's suitable, meaning for liability purposes.
Well, the theory...
But, you know, if, I know if y'all don't have that in play, then it doesn't, it doesn't go to y'all, but I, you know, it just never gets to that point where...
The theory behind that always was, when you've got a small agency, and you let the guys take, especially the guy, especially sheriff's department, most of them live on the county, and you let them drive their vehicles to dinner or whatever, you're showing more of a police presence in the county. Even though he's not on duty, people typically don't see the driver's wearing a uniform or not, they just see that vehicle. And it makes, it gives it the element that there's more officers out there. Now, those officers are required to respond to emergencies, so a lot of times, and I'm sure it's happened, but you're out to dinner, and they get a call, honey, you're going to have to wait here for people, I will take care of this.
Exactly.
I'll call somebody to meet you, right? But like I said, we don't have that problem, because we don't allow them to take you off immediately.
And how many cars, how many officers work here night, how many officers working during the day by a car?
Are they in a car? One?
One day by one, of course. You have, you must get four at a time, six at a time, twelve at a time, or...
Usually at night, there's three.
One, three on duty at night, and a four in...
Unless there's a specific time during the month, right, that, or a specific time? I think it's during the month thereafter during the month.
There's twice a month we have a double day.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, that's, that's, every week we have a double day.
No, I'm sorry.
Every week we have a double day, but, but most officers, a lot of officers use that as a day off, and they take a day because they can have a longer weekend or something like that. So necessarily, we don't necessarily have 10 officers on the street on that day. As a matter of fact, today, some of our guys took off. Today's a double day, but we're, we still have a bare, we still have a bare...
And Eric, that saves us on overtime. Because if the guy takes off on the normal day, and we've got to get somebody to cover for him, then that guy's getting overtime.
But according to this chart here, you have six good cars that under 30,000 miles.
Right. Those are newer vehicles.
And that's what I'm saying, if you've got three that work during the day, three at night, well, what's...
Can you tell them which, because some of these are not, like Chevy Tahoe is utilized by who?
Yeah, the Tahoe, this Tahoe right here, that's the K9. So he's the only one that can use it, because that's out there. This car here, the Impala, that's my car. The Dodge Shrek, that's the Chiefs, and this one with the high mileage here, that's the one George... the one George uses.
The only car that I really see that's bad is that one 64, all the rest are under 100,000.
George's is the Crown V?
Yeah, this is the one.
The 360?
Yeah, because that's the one we get, we get passing down.
2003 still has 98,000 miles.
Yeah, but Mario, typically every agency turns vehicles over to 8,000, because the wear and tear on the police car is different from the regular car. It's not a standard car.
I understand that, and I understand we need new vehicles, but six vehicles, and according to what the city needs, the city needs, you know, a fan, a pump, or whatever, and we're looking at to buy, to spend, you need six, you don't need six cars.
Which six vehicles would be replaced? It would probably answer that question a little bit better.
All ones you always think about.
So the, all the ones that are, that have fair, basically, next to them?
Yeah, probably, in all honesty, what we would probably do, because George doesn't put as much miles on the car, so we would take, we would take one of the... Just for example, we take the 2010 and say 48,000 miles. We give that one to George, and we give the new vehicle to this officer.
So you'd have the chief in a, in a vehicle, in a brand-new vehicle, that's outfitted for outside, for...
Probably not, he probably keeps his truck.
Okay, as well as yours, the Impala?
I'd love that new car.
What I'm saying, if we've got these other officers that are out there running around, and then the ones that are sitting there, that's the ones that got the new car parked, what's the deal?
CR.
We have to have a better car out there than...
Yeah, I don't think that's the case, Mario. I think that our, all of our officers, every officer, with the exceptions of the lieutenants and the detectives, are on patrol. When they're on-duty, they're on patrol, including the sergeants.
Yeah, but I'd rather have you safer at night in a new car, versus a new car parked that the ones that are working during the day.
And our policy has always been, man, if the oldest car gets to the door, and that's the way it's always been.
But I think, Mario, to continue on, if the new guys, we would pass down older, newer cars to detectives and to keep at the department, and then give the newer vehicles to these guys that are on the, on the streets every day. So we wouldn't eliminate all of the older units, we would just utilize them for the detectives who don't put as many miles on them every day.
And Mario, and you're not in the middle of not that totally out, because the guy's got a new car, and he's on his day's off, it's going to be parked at his house.
I understand, but I believe, of course, it's good, 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 fair, fair, fair.
Well, and that's...
And you go buy six new, more vehicles when the city is, you know, when I'm in trouble, I don't want to say it in the word, but you try to save, you try to, is it, my question to you, is you don't need six cars?
Well, like I said, this is a budget request, and it's up to the council to decide.
Which one is Mr. Evans in?
His is obviously on there, because mine are changed, and it looks a different.
Is this in front of the, the one purpose by the city, I'm worried, is she plus the It's not personally on the...
It was the vehicle that the DA is, is one of the DA for the program that's working with the task force.
And my car wasn't taken by the city unit. I was with task force, his van moved that little car, and the Jeep Shrub.
And George's car.
And George's car.
I was just kind of, just kind of still curious about which ones were being replaced as well, which ones were being accounted by, by Blue Bureau, by, and that's what I was looking at.
I look at, if you, if we need the six, but I know that there's more, more concerns of, and that was your wish, because I'm not saying that we can't give it to you, we can't give it, but hopefully there's others, you ought to report, you ought to keep ours for a time, say.
Well, if you can only give us five, that's okay.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking, what are you willing? But not to be either, we just got to take into consideration of the whole citizens and the priorities of who needs what, and nothing to say, "Oh, Mario don't want to..." That's the first thing, "Oh, Mario don't want to get the cards to the police department." But if I see that there's fair cars here, good cars, maybe next year we could buy six new cars, or...
Well, this would be for next year's?
Well, we, they bought some on the 11th.
13, 14.
Maybe two years, we have to get parts.
Typically, if you're a healthy city, you typically, the police department, two cars a year, and you're healthy every year. Y'all have not done that, so you're a little bit behind, but, you know, if there was a way.
How is your...
You know, that's, you know...
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, you know, when they start, when you start seeing 80,000 miles, they start becoming a problem, and that is, when it comes to police cars, that is a high mileage for police cars.
When I see six cars that are under 30, so...
Yeah, there's definitely six that are still, but there's, when you, there's three, there are four, of six that are fair. But again, they're right at that point where they're going to start failing.
Can't we sell the car, then buy a new one, or what do you do with it?
What's going to be done with those tested vehicles?
I know, when you sell them for the past, they're auctioned.
Do we have any money, like?
No, they don't bring all that money, because you can talk about car, we can't use no money that you'll have, you don't have no...
seizure money.
From the last bus?
Right now, the seizure money is, we talked about it, one of the other areas for the cops.
But he's not getting some money yet, right, Nettie?
If we get more in, yeah, I mean, but we're, yeah, that's one of the discussions is the cops thing.
I'm kind of like, because around about six, I can see maybe some new ones, but, yeah, that's one opinion.
Some of the ones that are being replaced, because I think the last budget workshop, there was some equipment that needed to be replaced as well, or upgraded. Right, okay, so, you know, are any of these being replaced? Do they, do those have the older equipment that needs to be, in other words, you get the same, that you give a brand-new, brand-new car, brand-new equipment?
I think there were two really, that we replaced.
But these cars here have the cameras, they'll wander and all that?
Yeah, the six, they just happen to be the same number, but it's not, six, the six digital cameras are not related to the brand-new six that they're asking.
retrofit for the ticket writers as well? With the, for...
Cop sync, no, it would be, the cop sync is actually for 11, was it 11?
Yeah.
11 bits, then that proposal is actually...
But there's no way to incorporate it?
That was just two separate.
It's two separate.
Looks like vehicle 308 and 309 for sure.
But, you know, what I was trying to get at is mainly that, you know, if you're going to, you have this whole package of a brand-new vehicle, you know, at least incorporate it with the cop sync, cop sync in it, so that you can have, you don't have to buy something and then take it out and replace it.
Yeah, but cop sync, cop sync is a company on its own. They do installation on their own, and it's not part of the package.
Is it just a software firmware that, or...
It's hard, part was hardware and software, it's the laptops, and then the software that comes with it.
A couple of them are in 80,000, and their listing is fair, but the others that are over 80, their listing is fair also, wouldn't they be four, instead of just fair?
I didn't do that list, it's not...
Put between the other chief and then Eli, just our service mechanic, that we will, it's a combination.
What does Eli feel about some of these, the vehicles presented? I mean, he feels more confident with the Fords, obviously, correct?
I haven't talked to Eli about the difference in cars. Him and the chief.
I mean, I know that Eli's a Ford guy, so he's probably more...
And Eric, like I said, all the research that I've looked into, it looks like the majority of people are going to, and from what I understand, Ford, I heard Kennedy PDs are a lot...
The city Kennedy have them. I actually saw them driving to the coast from, that we're talking about.
Do you always buy at the same vehicle, like all six, same, or...
Typically.
Different places. Yeah, they're really connected vehicles in my view, some of them.
Because too, when you buy from the same place, and you buy six vehicles, I think you give a little bit better price than if you just bought three from this guy and three from the other.
I think it'd be going through HGC or buy board, because there really isn't a price rating based on...
So this price includes a discount, or?
Yes.
That would just, to get it bid out through this contracting of those companies, where we don't have to go out and bid.
I actually, typically with a lot of the Ford vehicles, we buy from Phil Pot.
Yes, and they're on buy board and...
I couldn't get Phil Pot to give me the quote. The guy never would email me back. So I went through in Sierra, and they got me a quote from where they buy it, and they gave us a pretty good discount, two for buying from them.
Can we go back to that, so the screen that had all the comparisons of the pricing?
If you give me a second, I think I can bring it up, put out all the lines in it.
What I would try to get at is, is the different change of numbers from, from rollback rates and all that, in pricing.
If, okay, if you'll let us go through the rest of the presentation, is there anything else on DVD that you had questions on?
You have a question on contracts?
I think I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Collective bargaining agreement, or?
One of the things we're going to talk about was the COLA merits, some questions on that, and that was why I would bring it up in the collective bargaining. I'll kind of jump forward, I'll get to sort of refresher from the last week. We had put in the, to council, council discussion last week about merits. Merits would only be for the employees that are non-police officers. Police officers currently are getting through their collective bargaining, they're getting their next tier. If we went with COLAs, which is constant living adjustment across the board, because that's, that's just a flat fee, doesn't, doesn't matter about your evaluation, a merit's based on valuation, then the police officers would also be eligible and get that on top of collective bargaining increase. So we've got that in here, so.
So we're good with that?
And it's, and it's, maybe in future years, you can make sure you don't always do that, maybe times you need to do COLAs, because you're going to probably come back with the Okay, so...
I like that one.
Okay, so if we'll go, if you're ready, the second page in the packet, if you want, or you're, what are you going to look on screen? To recap on the items that were last, last time, there was a budget discussion, council discussion. We had the increase in fund balance reduction, which we talked about, making sure that number was 30% of the original deficit. Then, as I just mentioned, the merit allocation versus COLA. There was three additional officers in that, there was four in office at full-time, the Chevy Tahos, digital cameras, and a turf tiger.
Council moron is those a lot of turf, turf diggers.
Again, I just kind of went over briefly explaining this. Cost of living versus merit, I was asked during the last meeting, if on the merit, if we could go back and figure out where everybody would fall in merit, and before Andy left, they were all completed, most of them were already completed before that date. We went back this morning, Jerry and I did, and put it in my spreadsheet to get the exact number, and it would put it at, the merit increase to the bottom, 81,285. And I had, originally I had 159, which was a time coach, it would have been 129, and I apologize. So that, that's helps out more a bit. That would be, again, merit for everybody beyond, besides a police officer. Then COLA, and if we did a 2%, and this is just general fund, this does not include water and sewer, they, I have included, there's enough money for us to cover the water and sewer, so I'm not, I'm not dwelling or bringing that up on here, because we don't, it's not part of the tax rate. So we've got that covered, it's very small, it's about $20,000, so we're not...
What is that?
About $20,000 for, based on either merit or COLAs.
Does that really change it?
Again, the COLA, 2% will be 65,481, and 3% will be 87,217, or 5% will be 128,830. So you can see, and again, that's something we are going to have to, as we go through the budget process, determine if we get to that point.
Do you do the COLA, that's be clear to the police officers, too?
Yes, on top of their collective bargaining. So what their collective bargaining numbers are, that they move up in their tier.
What percentage is this merit increase? Police, without the police officer?
That is, that would be that's police officer.
Yeah, but without it, what is the percentage increase? What did they say?
It's based on the evaluation.
It's based on evaluations. It's a two, three, or a five.
Okay, that's what, that's what, that's what's allocated for.
Yes, so we went in and put, you know, what everybody's valuation at this point was a two, or a three, or a five.
Okay.
So somewhere the evaluation percentage.
Okay, so they've been already...
They have not been, they've been evaluated, but they have not been given any...
Percent?
Dollars now, because there was no dollars in this year's budget.
But they've already been evaluated, you know, two, three, and what is two, three, and five percent?
There's actually no percent. I mean, there's actually no increase. I don't remember how the definitions are on the valuation, chief.
It's meet expectations, exceed expectation.
Can I see a sample of that, the valorization?
But not everyone got a merit, not everyone got a merit.
No, we got some, a lot of them.
There was, yeah, there were several of them, so it's...
So they're not, I believe they're... So the percent was given according to the evaluation point?
Yes, yes, it's a point, it's on points. I'm sure we went through, and then the next one's here. You want to give them the second, go back. We'll just go to the next one, and we'll kind of, kind of roll it into where we're going for tax rate, just the press. Other way, other way. Go with the other way.
Yeah, but which ones, now all of them are showing like that.
Okay, just to kind of, like I said, we are working towards that tax rate, and just quickly reminding the important dates. We, last week, you had the, we had publication of effective rollback rate, we had that publication that was handed out to you, and then if anybody saw, it was in the paper, so on August 14th, and it was in your paper, and it was your budget hearing, it's in there as well. Tonight, it's discuss and take a record vote, and we put a little information in packet together, the council packet, we sent it out by email, and people... Kind of want to go rule it out in a second. Then we have, you know, coming up, based on tonight, based on the meeting, when we get to the meeting, you'll schedule your public hearing dates, which should be, we're hoping for, the August 28th, September 10th, and then the adoption of the tax rate on the 12th. So, just to kind of keep saying these dates.
And this, and this record vote, we have never done it this way, is it, do we have to do it that way, or?
Yeah, I believe you have done it before, yes, you should have, that's there.
I don't think we've done it. Six years, and I don't want to, I might as well make it back here and workshop, but...
Okay, so we'll kind of, just to kind of recap again, just your, the current tax rate's .3178, that's your current year that you're in, right now, that's considered your 2012 tax rate, physically year 1213. The proposed budget that was handed out on August 1st was at .3233. The council discussion rate was at .5725, that was last week, the effective rate is .3157, and the rollback is .3233. Again, hold on. If anybody's, I want to ask, we talked about last week, effective rate, rollback rate, do we have an understanding of what those rates are as council, or?
The way I understand, the way I understand it, the rollback rate, I mean, is what's needed top rate, correct? But we can, we can vote on a rate, but we can go down the rate from that.
Yeah, let me, let me do a little, yeah. The effective rate, by the, the truth in taxation of the publications, the effective rate allows for about the same amount of operations, or, excuse me, same amount of maintenance, not... same amount of maintenance operation and INS, which is your debt service, your general fund and your debt service. The effective rate goes back and makes it be, you bring in the same amount of tax. It's not exact, but it's pretty close. So it takes last year's tax rate and makes this year's rate where they would bring in the same amount of tax. You're taking apples and oranges, and turning the oranges into apples, so you're running the same. Your rollback rate allows your M and O piece only, your general fund piece, an eight percent increase. That's the rollback rate that then is the one that's allowed, if you were to go over it, you could possibly have, voters could petition, and then you would have an election, and that would take several, by the time voters would do that, and the dates that they're allowed, it'd probably be January before your election. Could be a little sooner just depending on how quickly, if they were to go with that rate, um, or go that, that route. If, if that was to pass, then the voters passed it, when it got to that portion of the election, they would, whatever the rollback rate is, is where you would go back down. So your effective rate, you do not have to, you, you have to pub, publish, and two hearings, if you're gonna be over your rollback, if the rate you're proposing is over your rollback, or your effective. And every, and I mentioned that last time, everywhere I've been, you're always the one of them, so you're always getting two public hearings and publications. I've very rarely ever seen it through dial. So regardless, you're gonna have to do that, those hearings, publications.
At this point?
Yeah.
The proposed, you know? It's not, it's not out of that eight percent though, correct?
The proposed is at the rollback rate. The, the city man proposed on August first is right at the rollback rate, but it, it would be over the effective rate. Your current tax rate is over the effective rate. So if you just said, I'm gonna leave it at the current tax rate, you'd still have to do the publications, you still have to take a record vote tonight, you're, you're not gonna, that's, that's gonna continue that.
And the discussion rate is also taking into consideration the, the changes of, or the?
Yeah, and so then if you go to the next slide, the very last slide. And then, can you open that spreadsheet, too? Do you have it open? I want to have it open. The very last slide, um-